Okay, you're first up on our agenda. Let's call this meeting to order. And we'll start with Attorney Cross.
Three matters. The first one is Commissioner's Ordinance 2024-005, set in the gift donations.
Do you have comments for us? I mean, obviously, we've looked at this before.
No change. Well, I should say that there was one change since the original grant you got, and that was in response to concerns Mary Ann had about the note that I put at the end. And I think we tried to soften that a little bit after consulting with Tony Gillum. And so I think this is as modified by that.
Much appreciated.
So the note on page three, you were talking about at the top of page three, the diners are being restricted for purpose, limiting qualification upon the gift. I advise to consult with the donor's tax advisor as to the deductibility of such gifts for state, local, or federal, any authority.
Did you run that by Councilman Delam after it was amended?
Like I said, I copied it. I can do that again.
No, just so he's...
I think the whole concept there was its applicability. We certainly were concerned with use restricted, limited use perps, gifts, and donations.
But now it's benign. It's not saying that this is or is not tax deductible, and we're not describing to what this may.
I would strongly encourage you, as expert commissioners as you are, to avoid giving tax advice to your patients.
Right, and we don't, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to... Play that game because...
We've read this before, and if there's nothing to change, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-005.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this version of ordinance 2024-005. I like the note, the way it is. We should not in any way be in a position where people can say we're giving them tax advice and it turns out to be wrong. We're suggesting that they consult with their own tax advisor to determine whether it's deductible or not.
That being said, I think Mary Ann had another suggestion, which I think is a good one. It doesn't cost us anything and does revert to having, that is, the auditor's office could seek from the IRS, what's the term, instruction information letter or something like that. It basically just says that in the eyes of the IRS, we are tax exempt, subject to qualifying gifts being qualified that is donated to us for our governmental purpose. They will be tax deductible.
And so, Mark, any thoughts on that?
No.
Something you're willing to do?
I guess. I mean, I don't know what all is involved in it.
Nor do I, but I think it's simply a matter of accessing the IRS website. If there's more to it than that, then I think we can revisit it.
So would it be a letter specifically addressing Wayne County Government?
Yeah.
Or is it just any...
Well, I'm sure the letter's pretty vanilla, but it would be issued to us.
To Wayne County Government. Okay. And then it could be copied and given to anybody who asks about making donations. Is that the idea? Okay.
No, I asked last week if that, the naming rights, that was part, that's a gift.
But that is a contractual payment, so I don't...
That's not a gift. That is a contract for, it's a license agreement, is actually what it is. It's a license.
Yeah, because somebody said it was a gift, and I would, my next question is, is it come under that ordinance?
I don't believe it's a gift. I think it's...
It's not a gift, and as I mentioned, although I think Mary Ann already noted, this is not intended to directly address grants, but there's a likelihood that if the private sector becomes a little bit more, really amassingary in their attitudes toward supporting government, then we might have to look at it misogynistically. But I don't think it's an immediate problem.
All right. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor of approval of ordinance 2024-005, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. How many copies do we need? Three at least?
Another ordinance, Commissioner's Ordinance 2024...
How many copies and copies do you want?
I have Bobby Deeds in the auditor's, but I don't want them.
So at least two, let's do three.
As long as she has one, and I can get a copy later, I don't need that much. Ordinance 2024-006 is a mailbox ordinance, if you will, allowing the Highway Department Supervisor to investigate claims of mailbox damage. And the combines are plausible that certain damages was caused by activities of the department authorizing the supervisor to adjust those claims up to a maximum of $150. If they exceed $150, or if it appears to him that there's no probable connection to his department's activities, those matters left, Commissioner's for resolution.
Okay, so up to $150, they have the discretion to settle those claims. And I think we talked about if we go down this path, we need to provide them with a line item to...
That's what I was going to ask. Didn't decide that. I think, you know, it's functional weather, but I suppose, you know, like maybe create like a nonverbal fund for this budget.
And I guess I'm just thinking, let's do a line item that's funded every year. And it, there's, there's no issue with funding this out of one of the highway accounts, I wouldn't think.
Well, I mean, I shouldn't say that. I don't know what is motor vehicle, I'm not sure of the use limitation part. I think he has funds available within his overall budget. If he could create a $1,500 nonverbal line item, that would give him 10 mailboxes to way late each year.
Start off that, with that. It would be less than, I mean, we had last year, so...
Fewer than that probably, and then it would revert, and you just supplement it as needed, kind of like we do in ours.
So maybe we can take care of that workshop there.
Yeah, and we can get with Mike and see where he thinks it should, it should be, whether it's a separate fund or whether it's a line item in one of his existing...
Cheaper than fine claims.
Yeah.
Now, what if, I suppose we could deal with other damage to property, because there are occasions when residents have complaints about other property occasionally, so we can deal with that on a case-by-case basis, since this is so specific.
Yeah, this is specifically to mailbox.
Some people put yard guards, right.
This is something that's pre-put, and I think our prior practice was to send it to their insurance agent, and I could determine that's probably not a cost-effective way to handle the problem.
So let's deal with other issues.
Yeah, Christmas decorations are getting outright...
Or a fence that's close to the, to the right of way.
And I don't know if you've taken a look at some of those fiber optic towers, they, it's just a matter of time until one of those goes over.
No, I have no problem with, I'll take, make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-006.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2024-006. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There's a third one. Excuse me, sign, Mary Ann.
The last matter to take action on is a resolution. Coming back to your materiality, we're calling very...
Wait, these ordinances, the same number, shouldn't this be 06?
Oh, I'm sorry. One takes the wrong one. This one is 06, this one is 05, so maybe this is the one we already signed.
Oh, I've signed four. This will be number four, okay. We did get 06, okay.
Correct.
So this is the old one.
And that's 007.
This is 007.
Okay, you've got the right number. I'm sorry.
And then our paperwork is lost.
Okay, that's the first one.
All right, so there's a couple more for you to sign on 005.
Yeah, 06, I haven't, I've only signed one of 06. I'm sorry, Ron, I just went way ahead of us here.
06.
Bobby will sort it out at the end. Just sign everything you see.
Well, yeah, just keep signing, keep signing.
706?
Yes.
I've only signed one of 06. Oh, 07?
This makes for riveting television on shares.
Oh, it is, right. And some culinary visuals. Couple of names I brought in here. And Brad needs to sign this one. Materiality, right?
Yes.
That is number seven.
Okay, so let's talk about seven. What is ordered, Mary Ann, on 007, materiality? $500? Is that what we talked about? Pardon? $500?
Yes, this is cash variance only, and recall, this is same, I think Steve made a presentation to department heads, and saying, you know, how you reduce that as something to consider. I don't think there's been any real subsequent changes in it.
So this ordinance would set materiality of variances for cash at $500.
Which just triggers the duty then to report right away to the state.
To state board accounts.
Under the auditor's duty. The auditor's still charged with the obligation of exploring all variances, and then if there's any indication of misappropriation of funds by anyone or theft, then that has to be reported, regardless of the amount, to the prosecutor and to the state board accounts.
Mark, we've talked about this a couple of times, but I think you were okay with the $500. Any further discussion?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure with that, regardless of the dollar amount, that shall be reported, okay, that, that's in there there.
That's, yeah, it's part of the directive that was issued by the commission. And, you know, obviously, this isn't getting a lot of attention, since we were to have done this in 2016, so we're just now getting around to doing it, so...
Move for approval of materiality ordinance number 2024-007.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ron, we actually got a few ordinances about it today. How about that?
How about...
Was that latter day?
Well, Steve will have to, he drives, so we don't have, maybe we can get grandfathered in on our new subscriptions.
Yeah, yeah. What else have you got for us, Ron?
For FYI, I've been working, trying to, but I think this could, that feels harder to look at. I started this as a template for the white NCA's grant for childcare, but just look at the recitals and all that, because I would like to think that this could be the basis of most MOUs, and then there'll be a different template for interlocal agreements regarding the bodies. It has to be a little bit more, it's more grid and content-wise, it's in statute. This is just essentially taking the position that there's going to be a grant, not really delta and callbacks, basically, you know, trying to identify the pathway that might have been identified, but this one, the support wellness, any local economic development. So take a, and if I missed, it's more for, I'm sure Jeff's, and all of you, but if I misstated something in there, if I can say it more accurately, then let me know, because I don't profess to follow this as closely as Jeff certainly has.
I think the one thing that I would envision, that at least I don't see here, Lanson, quickly, is, is that there would be an attachment of some kind that describes, this is what you're going to do.
Yeah, absolutely. It'll be a schedule. You know, this is just the preamble to show the background, if you will, helping also.
Okay, and so each of the, the...
Each of the grants.
Each of the grants, whether it's to a community or a not-for-profit, would have a document. For a community, it would be an interlocal agreement. For a not-for-profit, it would be a...
The interlocal agreement, I'll get for that. It's not going to be that difficult, because I just go right down the statute.
But ultimately, it'll have these recitals, and then also a commitment, a schedule, as Ron called it, that this is what we're going to do with the money that you're granting to us. So there'll be commitments on both sides.
I mean, I think the schedule would describe the service, describe if there's a need for a third-party involvement for facilities such as this one, which is a lease facility.
Right.
And a timeline for implementation and completion.
And so these are, this would be, with the schedule attached, would be the commitment that we need to make by the end of 2024.
Yeah, actually, actually, the term I would use would be a grant, or a grant.
Which is the commitment. So essentially, it's a contract between the two entities saying...
Yeah, I think Beth said I got to avoid using the word donate or gift or whatever we're giving, not giving, but we're conveying taxpayer funds, so...
Right, right, okay. So thank you for that.
Just look at it, again, no pride, no options.
Okay.
A question arises, would there be an MOU with the Dublin to the economies of the world?
It would be an interlocal agreement.
That would be an interlocal...
Governmental entities, we have a structure for that in statute. This is a little bit, I mean, we're kind of trying to create a paper trail, if you will, but it's accurate.
Yeah, for example, I can't recall exactly how the economy and the park, or the gym, or whatever, you know, there could be a three-way, an interlocal agreement could be just between the county and economy, but if it's Kiwanis, or, you know, if it's a park, then it would have to be a little...
I think the concept that I'm understanding, in talking to Beth and Jeff, is that with our interlocal agreements, the unit will contract with, for instance, let's say, Pershing or East German Town has a sidewalk project that we're partially funding, and as well as some sewer. So they'll, they'll have to follow the procurement processes that are applicable, and we want Denver represented that they have.
Correct.
Now, in this case, each is under $50,000, so it's really a matter of just getting quotes. But they will then be the ones to contract with the respective contractors.
Correct. But this will document the commitment of funding and what that entity is going to do for that funding.
And I worked with the towns, these German Towns attorneys, Joe Lips, in our office, and gave him the templates we use for standard clauses in our contracts, and nondiscrimination, U-verify appropriations, and also alerted him that he'd need to create a system of checking contractors to make sure they're not debarred, since we are indirectly involved with federal funds.
And we'll do that as well.
Will we? Okay. So I, I don't want to overcomplicate it, but...
Right. And East German Town probably will be first up.
Yeah, I think they do.
They seem to be the most ready. Their fundraising campaign has already been launched, so we'll get documents prepared for them so that we can be ready when, when the time is...
Their proper corporate name, East German Town, and this, they're in World War II.
I remember that.
I didn't, I don't remember.
I think it was World War I.
World War I?
Yeah, but it raged throughout my childhood.
Yeah.
I see an economy, the project is Perry Township Community Building, so that might be a three-way MOU.
Might be, but the way I'm envisioning it is we would have an MOU with the, or an interlocal agreement with the economy.
With the economy, and then they would sub it out. They would have a MOU with Perry Township.
And one thing I'd like to have, that I didn't have, I don't have, would be your update this morning, Jeff, of the document you counsel interacted with after you had a chance to adjust it for their, their suggestions.
So we'll keep working on this, and we'll get some feedback for you on that. Thank you.
Now, should we retroactively have an MOU with the Wayne County Foundation, since we've already given them some advance on the animal project?
You know, we have an agreement.
Oh, we have an agreement with them.
We have an agreement, but...
I don't know that it's called a memorandum of understanding. I don't...
I don't know, I'll have to look.
We'll take it, why don't we take a look at that and see whether we need something different.
You signed a proposal with Sarafazano. Then you, the agreement with the foundation, I don't know, did you sign something other than this? Is that all you signed, or did you...
They signed that. The foundation signed that.
Okay, you didn't sign the Wayne County authorized signature?
No. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, I mean, if...
We double-checked.
There's just going to be a whole lot of agreements ultimately, and some are going to be retroactive. I just don't recall us having a, you know, now that the MOU is...
The template has an effective date designation that can be variable with each project, and so I think the point is we try to get a template that we can generally work with, and then make revisions to them as necessary.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else, Ron? Okay. Steve? You want to do this?
Can't we, he's, he killed his morning in this room.
Thank you.
Just have two things for you, real quick. The first thing is the utility agreement on our sample road, Bridge 76. So in moving right away, because it is one-lane bridge, we're determined to make it two-lane, we have to move a, an underground service electric line, and in doing so, it's going to be a reimbursable expense, so Endo will pay 80% of that, but it is under a separate utility agreement, so that is what is before you.
And our cost, or the total cost, is $5,570?
The total cost. It's $5,000, so...
So we, we pay the whole thing, and then we reimburse 80%, is that right?
Correct, yes. And we do have budgeted funds for this year already, so to account for that, so it's not like we need any additional appropriations for it.
Okay. Questions for Brandon on that one? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Next issue?
The second one is our construction contract with Brumbach Construction for the rehabilitation of Bridge 160 on Bridge Church. That went to be opened, it was up a couple of weeks ago, and they were the lowest bid on that contract, so we wanted to recommend a full contact.
Move for approval of the board's contract?
Second. The contract is for $280,000 for Bridge 160. And this is all, all three of us, right?
Yes, there is two signature pages.
Okay, I see. All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? If not, everybody, all in favor of approving the contract for Bridge 160 and the $280,000, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. They have our count?
Yes.
Have you had, or your estimate, or the engineer's estimate?
It was just slightly under, so I think you need to look in the back and... This was just a refresher. It is a community process project for us, so we did get a 50% match.
So the 280 is our share, or...
It's a total.
So we're going to get some of it back.
Yeah, the second signature is page two. How's Heine Road coming, since we're on Bridge Church? I looked over on my left shoulder, and there's Heine Road. How's it coming along?
We are actually, that was originally going to let in December. We were actually, two months ahead of schedule, so we are able to bump it up. Talking with Endo, we think that that would give us maybe a more advantageous or more competitive bid by moving it up to October, so that's what we're pushing for right now, so...
That's one huge project.
Yes.
I mean, how often do you have a bridge at a confluence?
Right.
And that is an engineering monster. That's great. I go down there, it's just, I love confluences. I took all my kids to every major confluence in the Midwest, and they were enthralled, because you know what's at a confluence normally? Nothing, because it floods all the time.
Right.
Confluences, I think, are so cool.
How many confluences are there in the Midwest?
Well, you start at the wall bash in the Ohio, and then you go to, you don't really want to go. My kids will never forgive me for our confluence vacation.
There's your brand.
All right. Anything else, Brandon?
Nope, that'll be it.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to go to Steve Higginbottom.
All right, you heard the report on the projects this morning, just a couple notes. I have since talked to the contractor during the first Bank Expo Hall, HVAC, and it's still on schedule to be shipped out between this week. Doesn't look like there'll be any delays on that.
What's the date?
And then on the two injector pump panel parts, indicators, two to four week lead time on those. So I do want to follow up then with the discussion, unless you have some other questions on that. The horsebound, horse barn roof, you heard Councilman Saunders indicate this morning here, he wanted us to look into that as a possible project to fund. I've given you, there's a paper in front of you, that, several pages, that, this is from the 2008 report that it got together several groups and put together a wish list of what things should possibly look like out the fairgrounds, and this is the section on relocating that horse complex. I'm not going to great detail, but as you read this, in my perspective, it's a, it's...
it's, and I know that there's a, there's a pot of money here that's a one-time thing, but you know, as we look at other things that fit more closely with our immediate plans, for example, parking, uh, interior upgrades at the Coleman Center, we mentioned the insulation portion in H, for the H P A C upgrade in, in the First Bank Expo Hall. So this might not be a project that rises to the top of that list, but I did want to look to you so that you can see what the thinking was at that time to relocate that. Was there an estimate of cost? Yeah, it's on the very back page.
At least it was two thousand eight dollars.
Correct. And so they estimated a million five in two thousand eight.
So it's probably four million.
Actually, a little, little more than that, because they were going to remove the old, old section and reclaim that as a space that could be used. And then the, next to the last page is a, is a map of the site and it kind of shows you where they suggested that it would go in the lower right-hand corner of that picture. You know, if you've been out there, we've got some drainage issues in that corner.
Yeah, and that's not quoted.
Yeah. And we've addressed those drainage issues at the current site. So do you know if these are in priority order from, I do not know. Okay. I will note that on that overlay picture that you can see, they did suggest parking on this side of the Expo Hall.
Right.
Which is what we've talked about, we haven't moved here recently. So you tell me what you want me to do with this, how much time you want me to spend? I mean, I know we can, we can have our fair committee, Fair Grounds Committee, look at this.
I think we should have a fair. Take a look and see, because I want to study the reasoning why we need to move it.
Okay.
What this says.
Like, just off the top of my head, I think there's some narrative in here that will address that, but also on our committee, do you have the, the whole report from two thousand eight that you can share with that?
We have, we have.
Okay. You want to talk to them?
Um, not at the moment. Okay. Let me clean off my desk first.
I have it whenever.
Okay.
You know, the fair committee, I don't think has a representative from the horse and pony people.
It's not a fair committee, it's a fairgrounds committee.
Fairgrounds committee, okay.
The fairgrounds committee is to market the fairgrounds and to determine what upgrades are necessary. We don't focus on a specific, but remember, we do have the fair representative as Sandy Bond, who's the chairperson of the, of the fair committee.
Right.
The Sandy Bond?
Sandy House, Sandy Bond.
Sandy House, okay.
Sandy Bond. No, Sandy House, Sandy Bonds are maiden names, yeah.
Okay, Sandy House.
Sandy House is on the committee.
But I, I would imagine, because I see four H in this so much, I'm guessing that this document was repaired with heavy participation from the four H horse and pony people, um, because that's really the only organization that utilizes the fairgrounds.
So if you read this narrative, they're suggesting is that we begin to reach out and have a contest there. Right now, it's pretty well used, our, our current facility is pretty well used by just our local horse and pony club and the four H fair. They're suggesting that we compete with other, other communities that hold, you know, local, state, national horse events.
Right, I've been over to the Henry County Horse Complex several times and that with those people, they could book double what they book and all of their hotels, very few in Henry County, um, you know, fill up, Lutzie Hotels, right up three, every time they hold an event and every weekend is booked, which shows that are, you know, not four H, they're professional shows and all kinds of shows. It's a major revenue producer for the, um, Henry County Fairgrounds.
And they just, they just actually voted to put another facility in as well. But it's not a government facility, it's a, it's a not-for-profit that actually runs that.
Right, but it's on the government.
It's on, it's on government property.
Right.
But it's not funded by taxpayer dollars.
Well, no, it's heavily funded by the food and beverage tax.
Plus their fundraisers, yeah.
Right, but if without the food and beverage tax, we would have never had this highly successful horse venue.
But, you know, are we so close that, do we want to compete with Henry County? I mean, they've already got an established facility, why would you want to dilute that pool?
It's for the same reason why Wendy's built their stores right next to McDonald's. It's the critical mass of this being like a.
At this point, I still stand by my original thought process is that we need to take our current facilities and, and improve them and market those to the best of our ability before you start looking beyond that.
Right, but I'm just telling you, they, they, the, the, the successful people from the Henry County Horse Community have told us that we could be highly booked because they turn business away.
And why can ours not be used now?
It, and, and that's what we need horse people to talk to. I think, you know, the people on the fairgrounds committee, to my knowledge, are not.
To find out.
And, you know, and they should talk to them. The, the horse people tell me that right now our facilities are not at the level for the competitions that they stage, the size, the scope, the, the texture of the soil. It would be like having the NFL play on a high school football field, you know, it needs to be upgraded.
When we fixed our drains last year, we actually upgraded the soils.
Much better.
To the specs of the horse and pony club. What we don't have is seen, uh, we don't, our, our stalls and stables, I think, are like forty-eight, where they've got several hundred stalls over there. And then the idea, if you look at that, that map, the idea was to move this one to another location so that other fair, uh, activities could move into that space and be more centrally located.
Okay, I'm not opposed to it. It's just.
I think it's important.
Steve said, I think we need to concentrate on what we have now, improve those to the level that we can maximize the dollars and rentals and.
If you looked at, if you looked at after the chamber dinner, did you see the parking?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they were, and we had a mud, mud hole.
I think, I think the priority next is definitely parking at the First Bank Expo.
Especially since you're going to have the, you know, if it turns out like we think it's going to turn out, where it's really going to be a lot quieter and marketable.
We need that.
Well, and even at the, at, at the chamber dinner, they alluded to, hopefully next year we'll be able to move to.
First Bank Expo.
Seven hundred and fifty people instead of sixty.
And that's where we need to look at that, sixty-one thousand that we have, is it best to spend that money down parking?
Well, and, and do we need more than sixty thousand?
Right, we don't know until we.
Exactly. So I, I think you're absolutely right, we need to send this to the, to the fairgrounds marketing committee and, and I think it probably would, if this is, if we're going to talk seriously about a horse show complex, uh, we need to try to get the input from some horse people.
Absolutely.
And.
Once we commit to.
I'm just hesitant to spend good money on the wrong location and, you know, I'm not an expert on horsemanship and exactly what the soil needs to be like and exactly what the drainage has to be. I think we would be wrong to spend a great deal at our current location. If in a few short years we find that that is just not marketable.
Was this, move the barn also?
Probably a new barn. Be tearing this down and building a new barn. Actually, they suggested tearing down this barn and using that space for other, other things, but, you know, could that barn be used for other stuff? I don't know. If it, if it were used for other stuff, it would still need a roof.
Yeah.
I'll point out that the barns in Henry County have naming rights on, I'd say, twelve or fifteen structures. So I think we need not think that this a hundred percent has to be done with tax dollars. Every barn is named by families, businesses. It is one of the activities that is very attractive to donors.
Do we have any idea how much that generates for them? You know, it's one thing to have a naming right for a thousand dollars a year, the other, if it's a hundred thousand dollars a year, that's significant.
You're talking about naming rights a dollar amount for Henry County?
Yeah. I didn't figure you knew off the top of your head.
It's a private nonprofit that runs the horse venue, but what it does is enhance the Henry County fairgrounds.
Sure.
And Robert's Park. It contributes greatly to the quality of life, you know, spectator events and all that sort of thing. It adds great value to the Henry County fairgrounds, but the profitability of the nonprofit, if you will, is all plowed back into upgrading the facility. So I'm thinking that the profitability does not pass through to the county so much as the value of the fairgrounds is upgraded every year.
Okay, so you'll take this to the committee?
Yep.
What else have you got?
And then I just learned this morning from the sheriff that the roof at the jail has a leak and I talked to Dale about it and apparently it's not on the, remembering the portion that we fixed, he thinks it's on the flat roof area that is out, if you walk into jail where the elevator and that open, that lobby area is, there's a flat roof on top of that portion of it. So it's not on the hip roof, he thinks it's on the flat roof. He's going to look at it today and see if there's some obvious thing that he can see. And also I asked him, you know, find out if it's, if it's still leaking, if it was during that time period, everyone, a couple of weeks ago, we had a rain and then it froze.
Right.
And then it rained again, you know, sometimes an ice dam like that will build up and push over the top of the fly sheet. So we'll take a look at it and report back to you if it's something obvious.
And I, I want to make sure that we keep council informed on this too.
Again, a couple of things on internal controls, you just passed your materiality ordinance this morning. Remember, we've sent out to the departments to get their feedback and to identify those spots. Beth has got about fifty percent feedback so far. Fred, Friday is the deadline, whoever she doesn't hear from on Friday, she'll follow up with that.
Okay.
But we should have that information back by the next week.
We'll continue to make some progress.
And then we also sent to American Publishing our ordinances, we identified the ordinances that have passed since July of twenty nineteen and so that you'll have a specific cost available to you when we consider an agreement.
Yeah, okay, you need to add three to that list.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt, yeah. And then the last thing you've got before you do the last month's report for weights and measures is before you up there, nothing extraordinary on it, just to point out that the one issue we did have, it was, it was a complaint called into the state, state referred back to us, the state official met, met us out to a facility up in South City that where there was water and a diesel fuel tank and that was fixed and cleared. We took it off, we took it out of service, I told them to get it fixed, and they had to certify that it was fixed and then it was put back into service.
Okay, good. That's all right. Any update on, we got a complaint forwarded to us from the city, some properties that were.
We, we sent letters, we sent initial contact letter to both of the two houses at that one.
What, what, what's, I'm sorry, what was the problem?
Jumping litter.
And they were in the two mile fringe?
They're in the two mile. They're in the two mile fringe, but it's not a zoning issue, it's a, just a trash issue. And so we'll address it through our litter ordinance and Laura sent it out to them this week.
So at this point, it's, it's not considered to be a health department issue for any reason?
Okay, there was no evidence of, you know.
Where is it, Steve?
It's on two twenty-seven north, just north of New Parish Pike. On the west side, I think, west.
And I think we already had that on a radar, if I remember right, it seemed like I went to.
Um, maybe it was on your radar.
I don't think it was on.
Somebody, I think somebody sent me a letter and I talked to Steve.
Okay.
Anyway, I think that's the one, I'll have to check my records.
I announced their photographs of the property, he brought them down.
I could be wrong.
Looked at them and it's, especially one of them, right just to the level of an issue. The other was not quite as bad, but we, since they're next door to one another, we went ahead and, okay.
I've got a couple of things. Number one, there's good news and bad news about our savings on our electrical measurement. In prior years, we've saved anywhere from twenty to fifty thousand dollars on the manner in which Bridgerton Power and Light measures our electrical usage. In twenty twenty-three, we only saved fifteen thousand dollars, which is the lowest amount of savings. And Ralph Bain, the engineer, has always told us he would keep us apprised if we need to go back to the regular method. And the jail and the annex each saved over eight thousand dollars by staying with the obvious coin method. It was the courthouse that was the culprit. By going with the coin method, we actually spent eleven hundred dollars more last year. So I was, I've been talking to Ralph about how could that be? I know we had contractors in the courthouse possibly using electrical tools that had a draw.
Plus, plus remember, we didn't finish that project till late last year and many of the units were not on the new computer controlled, controlled system. So, so now they're under a computer control, which, you know, hopefully is more efficient in making, you know, adjusting the temperature and monitoring the room temperature. Before, they were just on local zone temperatures that were set manually. People could turn them up.
Yeah, he said the courthouse was kept very cold twenty-four seven. It was, it, it was, at night, the courthouse was kept, uh, air-conditioned below what other normal business temperatures at night.
And we did not have the ability to control all zones ourselves through a computer. They were at the mercy of the, of the office holder, of whoever was close to the thermostat and, you know, but now it's under computer control.
Okay.
And everybody's locked out of it. They can, they can act with the, with the zone control they have, they can, I think, move it an inch, a inch and a half, a degree and a half either way, but that's all a letter.
I'll admit I didn't watch the contract on the exterior, were they using electrically driven tools?
Yeah.
Okay, so my, my instinct was, hey, we still save fifteen thousand dollars, which is better than nothing.
Absolutely.
So why go back to the old method and not save?
I don't think we're ready to reconsider for, for just that reason, but our methods that we have taken to save not only electricity, but in our natural gas, the savings are creeping up to being not near as well as they used to be. You remember with our natural gas, we buy that off the open market now rather than just to the vector and they've done a real good job of being, you know, and I don't know how it quite works, where we get our, our natural gas from Texas and it sends it up here through the lines versus something from Ohio, but when there's cold parts in other parts of the nation, it impacts us because they too are drawn on the same source that we're drawing on. So we, we monitor that as well. We're still a couple cents better per cubic foot, cubic yard of gas, uh, and we're still better on our electric so far, so.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, so it was only fifteen thousand, thirty-nine dollars last year. Over time, pretty soon it's, uh, pretty good money and over the last eleven years, since I called Ralph that day and said our light goes too dang high, um, we've saved close to four hundred thousand dollars. So they've been real good to work with, really appreciate it. So four hundred thousand is.
And see, the jail, we, we noticed, you know, just monitoring our electric bill, the moment that that got turned over to us after fixing, replacing all the heating units over there and there's a new control, our, our electric usage went down over there.
That's great.
It was, it was, I was pleasantly surprised.
Yeah, that's good. So, and, but actually we did great in the annex, it was almost about eighty-two hundred saved in the annex.
And again.
Eighty-three hundred in the jail.
Remember, we paid for a new software system for this bill.
Right. So that's good. So I'll get back to Ralph and say. So I'll get back to Ralph and say, I don't think we need a vote on it, just continuing where we are.
Yeah.
And I think we can expect to get back up in the $40,000 range next year, and sometime over the next few months, one of you needs to decide who wants to be the electric bill watcher in the future, because we do need to monitor it, because at any given time, if we have extraordinary, extraordinary weather patterns, that can greatly affect which kind of method we want to go by. The other matter has to do with Fifth Street. As you all know, we had a near tragic accident at the crosswalk, and...
Where she stopped the car?
Yeah, where you stopped the car, and the car went, almost, but you took it on. You were bold, brave. Remember, I'm sure you remember better than any of us, Steve, how hard it was to get that crosswalk placed at the outset, and I took a good long look at it during lunch and found that the crosswalk really needs to be painted.
Yes, it does.
It's an awkward crosswalk.
And it's, I don't think it's in the right place. We need to revisit this with the city and see what we can work out, but do whatever we can to make that as safe as possible. And you've, you've already applied for the possibility of a crosswalk on Third Street, I believe, to, to Endot. Should be much easier in theory to work out an agreement with the city on Fifth Street than it will be to work out an agreement with Endot on, on Third Street, but let's, let's keep moving in that direction, see what we can come up with. I think it's, it's unlikely that we're going to convince people on Third Street that they should go down to one of the corners to cross. It's just too far for people to make that decision. So if we can improve the safety, you know, we'll need to weigh against what it would cost to do it. I'm sure that being on a state highway, it'll, it'll have regulations about curb cuts and, and how those need to be treated and signage and all of that kind of stuff, but it's, it is a safety issue, so we need to take a look at that. So I know you're on top of it, and we'll continue.
You can add that to your...
Just one more thing to do.
It's actually already on my list.
Is it really? Because we, we were so fortunate that the injuries were not more severe, and thank you very much, Bobby, for taking one for the team.
For getting hit out there.
No problem, anytime.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thanks for taking one.
Taking one for the team so that we can give a change.
Which probably need to recall, back in the day, we used to meet with Mayor Sally Hutton monthly for commissioners, and Sally would get to go to meetings just to sort of get the state of the city, county. We had a good relationship with Sally, and, you know, sometimes we'd just get together for 15, 20 minutes just to touch base. I would like to give some thought to rekindling that relationship with the new mayor. It was, you know, we would go back and forth. Sometimes we'd walk across Main Street, and sometimes the mayor would walk across here. I, I think just as it's been helpful to meet with our elected officials and department heads, I think it could still be a good relationship between the city and county if we had face-to-face with the mayor.
We can invite him to come to one of our meetings, just if, if all three of us, or even if two of us are there, it would be a public meeting, right?
Well, it's a hot, hot... It's close to an issue caucus, I mean, basically, if you're talking about issues that involve city, county relationships.
We advertised it as a public meeting, even though it was just a social, you know, with a little agenda, you know, to discuss matters of interest to both city and county, and we just held it in the, what's now Steve's office, partially. And, you know, we, we advertised it to the commissioners and the mayor of Richmond, we're going to be meeting to discuss matters of interest to both the city and county, and it was a public meeting, and I think we had a...
There was a problem, and we'll, we'll talk about it.
I think just inviting him to our meeting might be a little boring on his part.
Well, he didn't have to stay for the whole thing. He could have been there for 15 minutes, that's what we just said.
But sometimes, sometimes it was more substantive. I just know that good things happened when we came together.
I, I talked to Ron frequently, so I, I posed that question to him.
Yeah, I, it, it was a, a healthy, it could be monthly, it could be, I'm digging, every other month, whatever.
Okay. What else? Do you want to go ahead with the claims?
I think you can go back with them.
Steve, you're done, right?
Yes.
What do we have for claims?
I do have one other item before we get to that. I don't know if the commissioner or all the commissioners had a call from the veterinarian who is conducting the animal issue study with the Wayne County Foundation, Dr. Sarah Pizzano called. Are you meeting with her, too?
I, I talked to her virtually on the phone last week, asked her to give you a call.
Okay. She's coming in Tuesday at 11:00 next week, and of course, I understood from the original proposal that she would meet with commissioners, so we would have an opportunity to convey what we would hope that our $50,000 would get us.
She'll meet individually with commissioners, not at a commission meeting. She's, she's going to be talking to you. I talked to her already, and I think Brad, if you talked to her...
Have you talked to Sarah Pizzano?
I'm meeting with her Monday.
Monday, okay. Do we have a point of view regarding what Wayne County government hopes to learn from the study? We really haven't...
I, I think we should wait until the study comes out to form an opinion of what, I mean, I don't know.
I want, I want her to tell us what she recommends from her perspective. Players, what are her recommendations?
Well, she's formed a point of view, you know, I asked her to send her materialism methods, and her point of view is that she's going to come up with guidelines for how the county should work with its contract shelter providers. I mean, that would be like, she's going to recommend no change in our current...
Do we know that for sure?
That's what she says she's going to do, and that's not what I'm looking for.
My conversation with her was that she would talk to all of the players, formulate recommendations based on those conversations, and that we would get the report in a matter of a couple of weeks after she visits. That's, that was my conversation.
So she's going to talk to who? I mean, I, I was hoping to get her methodology rather than, you know...
But, and, and you'll be talking to her, so you can ask her that when you speak to her next week.
I mean, I wasn't expecting her to recommend sustainable resolution of animal welfare issues through community-wide and shelter programs. I mean, I wasn't expecting her to tell us how to work with our contract shelters, you know. Who says we're going to have contract shelters in the future? I thought it would be more...
Says we're not.
Yeah, I, that's not what I'm looking for.
And I think she is going to make recommendations to us, so let's see what her recommendations are. You'll have an opportunity for input. Brad has an opportunity for input. I've already talked to her for a little while, Monday, and she's going to put together the report. That's what she's been contracted to do with, from the Wayne County Foundation.
Okay, I hope that I won't be the only commissioner who's looking for something really guidance on how we can work with our contract shelters.
I'm looking for her recommendations and see what, what she has to say after she talks to me.
Okay, but you, you would not differ with me, I hope, on we are not looking to just continue the way we are?
I'm not going to form any opinions until we hear from her. She's the expert. She's coming in to look at this and give us, share her expertise.
I can't form an, an opinion without knowing what her recommendation is.
Okay, but normally...
I don't want to go in with a preconceived, we want this, and she tells us that. That wouldn't be fair to her or to...
It seems to me that you have a preconception of what you want, and you think you may not get that.
Well, in my private sector career, which is about, you know, all of my life prior to being a commissioner, I have purchased millions and millions of dollars worth of research, and always, as the client for that research purchaser, have always worked with the research provider to design the research so that the results of the research would be actionable.
And I think it will be.
So in, in order to have actionable research designed, the hard part is knowing what you want to find out, and we are not giving this research provider any guidance on what we want to find out. But I will give her guidance.
And that's why, that's why I made sure that she called you.
Okay, I would just prefer that we had a commonality in wishing to have actionable guidance that we agree upon.
Well, I agree with you in this, that I hope we get actionable, actionable recommendations.
And that's what I'm hoping to have, yeah.
I have no idea whether we'll agree upon them or not, and we'll find out after we get those recommendations.
Okay. Well, I certainly hope it goes beyond how to better manage our existing crisis. Okay.
Yeah.
All righty.
Okay, so you've got the...
Do you want her design? Did she, did you get her design?
I had that from a few months ago.
Oh, yeah, this is it.
Yeah.
I asked her for it, and, you know, I've got like 10 pages of her credentials and two pages of what she's going to do.
Okay.
I think you've got it.
I do.
But you don't need 10 pages of credentials?
I, I do not.
Okay.
Claims?
Yes. Move for the approval of claims as follows. Centerpoint claims dated February 5th. Move for approval of regular claims dated today, February 7th. That's it. Oh, and claims from Galcasa, monthly contracts dated February 7th.
Second. Their motion and a second. Any further questions on the claims? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Also move for approval of minutes, which were impeccable, dated January 31st. Minutes, did I say claims? Move for approval of minutes dated January 31st, 2024.
Second.
Is that also to second the impeccable minutes?
Sure.
Richmond prepared fire.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Richmond prepared fire to taking on tons of metal.
Not to mention all the plastic, probably.
Yeah, and some.
Okay. True RX agreement. We approved this, was it last week or two weeks ago?
It's a term due year, thanks, we've been voting on over the last couple months.
This is the true RX. Just the ordinance requires a signature, signatures. Was Kim going to be available to talk about this again?
She needed to, I can get her.
You all familiar enough with this, or do you want her to come in, refresh our memories?
This is the prescription for, like, North Canada or wherever.
Correct.
Now, I think I'm...
If that works, yeah. So is there a motion to...
All made up.
...the true RX pharmacy benefit line design?
Yes.
Any more questions?
Questions answered.
Do we have a second?
How much is it?
It's, it's not a contractual cost, it's the process that they're going to go into with to, to potentially use...
It's the ability.
Give them the ability to go outside and cut their drugs.
Okay. Our exposure, is that a better question to ask? What's our exposure on this agreement?
There is none, there should be savings.
It should be a saving. I mean, that's, you're giving him a little flex. I think you'd express some concerns in parameters of foreign providers, and I thought they addressed those.
Right, that they, it would have to be approved by the FDA.
Have to be FDA-approved.
For us to use them. But that's essentially it, that if there's a cost savings for, for true RX to purchase medications from foreign sources, they would do that, but only if those foreign sources were FDA-approved.
So it's all savings, it's sort of like going to the obvious coin method of electricity purchase, okay? It's a cheaper method of providing an essential commodity.
If it's more expensive, they would not use that.
Electricity is a commodity, prescription drugs are commodities, and this is the cheaper way to get it.
Certainly, you're coming in.
A second, okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and this appears to be just the president's signature.
We accept the amendment to allow the president's...
To allow the president, yes.
I'll second the amendment.
So motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, so you've got that, I'll sign that a minute. Now, the, the East Central Indiana Regional Partnership has the vehicle for our Betty II application. You saw, heard from council this morning, they approved, council signing off on this letter. There's the letter. It is due on Friday, so we need to try to get it signed and sent. It is basically the letter that they put in, suggested to us, with a couple of changes in the second paragraph that add a little information about what Wayne County has been doing along the community development, economic development front in terms of planning. So with that...
Is there any way we could get a more legible print?
I, I asked about that, and that's what Bobby was able to print out today, so.
Did you try a different printer?
I can try a different one.
That's just really not good.
But if we can go ahead and approve it and get it signed, and then Bobby can try to print out a more legible copy of that first page.
I'd just like to read it, if that's okay.
Please, go ahead, and there's a hotel rate increase, while you're taking a look at that.
It'll be retroactive for the Mercy accommodations for January 28th through 31st for two rooms for $165 a night at the Marriott in Knoxville.
Who is this, did you say?
The EMA.
Okay, and...
Move for approval.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second to approve that hotel rate increase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead.
Next week, you're going to get a claim from Dunn, and on that claim, they have an expense of $403,000 for the month of what they paid, and we've been writing them checks for $335,000 a month.
Yes.
So we are calculating that they're getting into their reserves for the difference?
Not, not based on that, you can't calculate that.
Well, they're getting the money from someplace.
The 335...
Right.
Is only... Is only what the county pays in the county share of, of, of the cost of the health insurance for individuals. In addition to that, the employees pay a share.
That's correct.
And it is, it's more than 70,000. I don't have the exact number.
Right.
Depends on the month.
My point is, they're holding $4,200,000 of county money.
I think it's a little less than that this week, but.
Not on that bill. So, that's a lot of money.
You brought this up several times, you brought this up several times. We've talked about it.
Right.
What's your point?
My point is, that if you're trying to reduce that 4,200,000, that there has to, there, you're not going to get it done by doing it, what we're currently doing. It's going to, it probably would increase a little bit.
And what we have discussed, and what we did in December.
Right.
Is we gave a holiday, and we said at the time that we would revisit this on a quarterly basis and decide whether it was time to do another holiday.
I understand.
Okay.
My point is, that if you're going to do the holiday, there are several other things you could do that would help the employees. And that holiday reduction to that 4,200,000 after the holiday is not sufficient if your goal is to reduce that 4,200,000. I don't know what your goal is with it.
And you certainly don't know what is sufficient either.
No.
Okay.
And I, as auditor, I'm asking, what do you consider as an efficient level in that, in Dunn's budgets, or whatever you want to call those? And because, have you gone over that level? I've heard 2,500,000 is, is an amount that was.
I don't know where you heard that.
Well, I can't tell you because I don't know. I've just.
I think we talked at one point about 3 million.
I've heard 3, never 2.
Okay.
So, we don't have a hard and fast number, we're moving.
Nothing below 3 is my recollection.
That is a dynamic number, too.
It is.
You've come out of two really good years.
Absolutely.
Or do for a.
We had a bad year, and we're going to get to 3 million or below.
And then you wonder where the reserves are, and you look, well, they're in the data, and that's not really what we're planning, envisioning to meet.
So, I guess, I'll come back to what's your point. I'm, I'm not sure.
My point is, I think.
We're looking at it, we're.
Okay.
We're reviewing it.
But I'm curious, cash has always been king in a lot of books, what's your, what's better than cash?
Nothing.
Well, I thought you said there was something better than a holiday.
Well, there are several things that you can do to help the employees. I think it should be something that would be a long-term help, instead of just a one-shot deal.
You need to be careful, plan design.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely. And, and this is, several times you've come to us, wanting to talk about the plan design. And I just respectfully don't believe that's your role. We are talking with Dunn, Dunn is our expert, we've been working with them for.
Yeah, but I just want to be on a silver bullet, I mean, you've got a cure for cancer that I haven't heard about.
There is no silver bullet.
There isn't any. I used to be, when, years ago, we had Blue Tusk, Blue Shield. I know what this stuff is, and I know what, what the problems with it were in good years and bad years. My point, though, is, if you have that kind of money, 4,200,000 today, and you, you obviously wanted to reduce that money in reserves by giving a holiday in December.
We didn't want to increase the reserves. I think there's a difference, but we're, we're still willing to look at where we can come down to. I think we've discussed a number of times, and, and the number 3 million has come up several times as kind of the low point that, that we would want to go to intentionally. That's, that's in no way saying that we won't go below that unintentionally, because claims go up. And as, as Ron alluded to, we've had two or three really, really good years, thank you employees, but that could change tomorrow.
Absolutely.
And so, we're, we're being cautious, being conservative.
Is there, okay, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, if you have that much cash, and you don't need it, then.
It is called reserves for a reason.
You don't need it now, but.
We need to talk. We don't need it today, but we might need it tomorrow. We're working through this.
Okay.
I think we should, in the next couple of weeks, think about another holiday, or.
Absolutely.
You know, it's, it's close to the time, we need to sit down with Dunn before July 1st and be thinking about design.
Absolutely.
You know, Christmas holiday was kind of nice, another one of the big holidays is coming up, and Easter. Christmas and Easter holidays are two of my favorites, so we could be looking at an Easter holiday.
They're.
We'll be thankful we don't have the problem that.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, when we did the holiday in December, we were at 4.3 million in reserves. We're now, the last number I saw, we were at 4.1 million. I actually talked to Kim about it. We've come down a little bit, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, we're, we're moving in the direction that we want to. I don't think we need to increase the level that we have in reserves, at least that's my opinion.
Yeah, we want to do it careful, too. We don't want to come down too quickly, because.
Because we don't want to.
We had a decision.
We have a decision, saying oops.
Yeah, exactly.
We, we threw in the towel too early, and now, and now we, we have a bad experience this month.
What does a holiday cost us?
Well, it's the, it is the 300 and roughly $30,000 a year.
That's our share, but employee share.
That's our share. There's about 80, 85,000 a month, that is employee share, and there's another 100-ish thousand on a monthly basis that comes from other funds to pay for insurance for employees that are paid out of funds other than the general fund. So, that all factors in, so it's roughly 400, between 400 and 425,000 a month.
But we might have the option of making the employer payment.
Correct.
And just withholding the employee share.
Correct.
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 So, we could get away with just 80,000 maybe? Or what about that, 100,000? Can you give me an example of what that 100,000 represents?
Sure. Somebody that's.
Funded on a grant.
Funded out of a grant, maybe in the health department.
The grant allows.
Oh, that much?
Oh, yeah.
Wow, we're grant-rich.
Wow. It's also people that are paid out of funds other than the general fund. So, if you're paid out of the highway fund.
Oh, okay.
Whatever, it's, it's, it's not a reduction in the general fund. It would be partially a reduction.
Judges and.
Whatever fund they're paid out of. We can.
Probation, judges.
We have that information, I just don't have it.
But it's a lot, so 180.
But that includes, that, that is the employer's share, not the employee's share.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, so it's, it's a, I want to say the total was 3, 300,000 to 400,000 for the year. And so, on a monthly basis, that would equate to 50,000. I think I said 100, but I think that's.
Yeah, okay, so.
I overestimated.
If we just gave the employees a holiday and not.
It's 85,000.
The employer.
And we, we can have Kim give us all those numbers.
Yeah, I think sometime in February it'd be good to talk about it.
Okay.
Because that's first quarter.
We can do that, we can start thinking in terms of.
Because Easter's pretty early this year.
All right, Mark, what else have you got?
All right. I have, let me go back to something. It is not my job to determine what you do with your health plan. But when I think there is too much money in a particular item, and I'm requesting on how you would reduce that money if you wanted to, then I would suggest that there are several things you can do for the employees that would be helpful, would not cost the county a lot of money, and would still maintain this.
Why don't you put that in writing for us and share that with us?
I will do that.
All right.
Second thing. We have grants in this county that have been authorized by the county commissioners that are not finalized, and they're drawing money on them.
What's that mean, not finalized?
They haven't been accepted by the state.
Okay.
And we have, and I don't know how to rectify that problem, unless, when we get a claim on, on a grant that hasn't been, then I'm suggesting that I will put, present the commissions with that claim, and I'm going to ask you to deny it. I don't know what else to do with these, for example.
Is there currently a process where you notify the department?
We have talked to them, we have dealt with them. The help is not sufficient to avoid these problems that I can see.
The help is not sufficient.
That, what does that mean? We got, we have people that have claims, and the, are, these grants, these aren't my grants. These grants belong to the office holder, and they are basically saying, we're not going to give you the information that you want. So, and in fact, it's, I don't see an alternative right now to anything else than not making a payment on a grant that I can't get information on. I'm still, I have a grant here that died in September of '23. They spent $19,000 out of the grant. The state has not accepted this grant, and we're not getting any money.
So, what, what department is it, what grant is it?
This is EMA.
Okay, and so what is the, what's the issue? What are they, what are the claims for?
Well, I'd have to go back here and look, it, it came to the $18,225. The grant hasn't even been accepted yet by the state of Indiana.
And, and that's documented how?
We contacted them.
Okay, and they say, no, it's not approved?
That's what, as of yesterday, I called them myself, and that's what I was told.
Okay.
Because we've been dealing with this for a long time.
Has he told the EMA that it's not approved?
I, yes. They, they don't have an approval letter, but they have the federal, but they don't have the state.
Okay.
And they've spent money out of that grant totaling the $18,225, and the question is, is the grant, it's dead. It died in September, and my issue with it is, we've got to get that money back, or.
So, the grant is ended.
Right.
That it was never approved.
That's right.
And that's.
And we run into that quite a bit.
Our process needs to somehow.
In some way, we've got to put a stop to that.
Well, we will check this one out with, with EMA, see what, what they have to say about it, but I would, I would say, if there are issues like this, bring it to us. You know, we can't do anything about it if we don't know about it.
Well, we didn't know about it on some of these grants, because we don't, we don't get the information on them. We finally got some information on this one. We had one in the sheriff's department that is basically the same thing, and they finally got us the information that we need. It's, the process of doing this puts us in a position that if they don't get the state approval, then the county's going to have to come up with some money. And I don't want to be in that position.
Okay, so get us some particulars on this one, if you've got a few others. You mentioned one in the sheriff's office.
Yes.
Get us some information on that, we'll follow up, see, see what we can.
But I.
And we may need to, we may need to make some changes to our grant process that.
Well, you're saying.
These have to be reimbursables, I assume.
Well, and, and I would think so, but again.
Normally, the state doesn't accept, we accept state awards.
Correct.
And so, the way we would end up behind the eight ball would be, if it's a reimbursable, we spend in reliance upon expectations of getting reimbursed, and we don't get reimbursed because.
We may, we may need to include some kind of letter of commitment from the grantor as part of the process to be able to spend funds.
For a claim to be paid on a reimbursable grant, there has to be a box checked.
What I'm saying is, in addition to the problems that exist.
You've got to cite the document that authorizes you to submit a claim on a reimbursable grant.
What I'm saying is, there's going to be a point where I'm going to start not paying claims.
I understand that.
And.
And that's a way to get people's attention.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
And it makes it difficult, because we have several of these that we're not getting information about, that I'm going to have to stop paying claims on just to get their attention. And you're going to hear about it.
Absolutely, and, and rightly so, but it's, it's a problem that we need to address, it sounds like.
Yes.
Yeah, we're hearing about this for the first time.
And so.
We need some more information, and we'll, we'll work to address it. It may be a topic that we want to bring up at, at our next elected officials meeting to have some discussion.
However you want to do it.
We can start with our direct report.
Absolutely.
But our protocol does say that it's a reimbursable grant, council has to.
Correct.
You just have to have appropriation in place. And I guess, if it's reimbursable, they've actually got to file something to get reimbursed.
Correct.
And if they don't file, you're not going to get any money.
That's correct, and we run into that, when they haven't filed.
I think, at least what I'm taking from what he's saying, is that this is slightly different, that they've applied, they've been accepted at the federal level, but it's being channeled through the state, and the state has not accepted or approved.
Right, and it's a dead grant. So, it is, it started in '21, and it, money was paid in '21, '22, and '23, and now I'm sitting here with no money back.
So.
And my fault.
Get us, get us the information so that we can look at it and see what.
Absolutely, because I'm going to stop paying claims.
So, let's start about it again next week, after we've had a chance to see what.
However you want to do it.
Okay, you go forward. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
That's enough.
Bobby?
What?
What have we missed?
I think we've done it all.
All right.
We hadn't talked about this.
That's the final thing I wanted to discuss, is this morning, we, we talked to the council about ARPA funding, and, I don't have a copy of that somewhere. So, what, you know, what were you.
I've got it.
Got $97,000 left. If this went through.
What we were pushing for was to get our recommendations to council approved. And most of them were approved, the two that were not were the creating places for non-help towns and the speed limit signs.
So, $2 million.
So, $2 million was approved, not 200, or 2 million, 200,000. So, that means that 2,300,000 at 1,81, is still uncommitted at this point. We've got, you know, the same possible additional projects that we talked about for several weeks, and what was, what was added to that list was, at the request of some of the council folks, I put together a list, working with Steve, off of, off, primarily off his spreadsheet. of his spreadsheet, uh, the projects that are underway, that were funded by, from other sources that were allowable expenses, uh, after talking to, to Baker Tilly, our consultants on this, they're allowable expenses with lost revenue funding, which all of the rest of our funding is classified as. Uh, so I put that on there as just a point of reference, uh, and, and had no earthly idea that they would take action on anything other than, uh, the group at the top, but you were both there, you heard, uh, they are making a counter-recommendation to us on, on these things on the bottom to the tune of two million, five hundred fifty-three, uh, dollars and, uh, two million, five hundred fifty-three, two hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Actually, I think it's only two.
I'm sorry.
Two hundred.
Two million.
Two hundred. They added.
They added five hundred thousand.
And a hundred and fifty.
And a hundred and fifty for the.
So you got to add six hundred and fifty thousand to the one, five, five, three, which is two point two oh three.
Two hundred, three thousand.
Two thirty-six.
Two thirty-six is what they're.
Which leaves only ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars still available if the council's plan went through.
So what, what I would like to do, uh, today is to consider the hundred and fifty thousand for the, uh, for the dump truck, uh, or not, but I, I, the rest I'm, I'd like to mull over.
Just mull over all of them. Is, is it urgent with the dump truck?
Well, I don't think so. It was, it's supposed to be delivered today, but I'm sure that the invoice is going to be in a net thirty days. Uh, so, so I think we've got a week or two to, to decide whether we want to make a counter-proposal back to, uh, the council, at least on that one. That one's the only one that has any urgency. Uh, because if we say no, and we don't want to pay for it out of ARPA, then we'll have to go back to them to get a way to pay for it. Uh, because it is, we did approve, uh, ordering that a year ago or more, uh, and now it's here, and we're going to need to pay for it, so, um, if, I'd like to, I'd like to think through some of these things, talk to some folks that are involved, um, and, and revisit it next week, um, and, and see what we're, what we're interested in, in, uh, doing this kind of a, a counter-proposal back to council. Any objection to that?
Uh, I just need a little bit of information on some, uh, number one, by them bumping the highway projects up to a million dollars, whoa! I mean, highway has, uh, had some good income, and it could be that some of that million dollars that council has in mind could be covered by the jail bond fund money. I don't know what all they have in mind, uh, for highway expenditures.
Jail bond fund is, is not, um, able to be spent on anything other than construction and maintenance of.
Well, maybe that's what council has in mind. I mean, highway does a lot of roads and bridges.
We sent out the list that Mike had put together. I'll have to dig it out and give it to you again, but it was projects at the, the highway department, and, and Max alluded to some of them, uh, painting the building. Uh, there was a, a, uh, calcium chloride tank where I think they mixed the calcium chloride mix that they used.
Well, none of the roads and bridges. I didn't know what council was thinking of when they went to a million dollars.
They talked about, there was, I want to say there was a million three on Mike's, uh, list of, of projects that were on his wish list, and so they settled on a million dollars of that wish list, uh, and plus.
So they're just routine upgrades to the grounds and buildings and grounds, basically?
I, I wouldn't necessarily classify it as routine.
But they're expenses that we have, at some point, we're going to have to do.
Have to do, and this is one potential source of funding, so.
But they're not major legacy projects like, say, fuel tanks.
If it's something you do once every thirty or forty years, I think it, it roughly fits into, uh, some of the discussion we've had over the last.
Hey, Marion, you keep saying legacy things. You got to remember that we have the help, that we're spending six million dollars, right?
Correct.
That are.
You take a few thousand.
Legacy items that the community.
Identify.
Identify that they want done.
Yep.
Well, other than the small towns, I, you know, I didn't really hear, I really don't see the, the six million dollars going for what the community told me they wanted. Certainly, the small-town community meetings were addressed, but I really can't see that the county meetings within the small towns addressed what the community told me that the community wanted. I mean, Richmond, sure. Richmond wants the gorge. That's getting a whole lot of money. But I don't really see that what community, the citizens told me they wanted has been addressed at all.
So perhaps what they told you is different from what they told me and others. So the help projects, which you're, you're talking about now, uh, were already approved, and that's, they're committed, and that's not on the table at this point for discussion.
Well, I mean, I'm going back to ARPA. I mean, it's all ARPA money, and I know the lost revenue allows it to spend it any way we want.
Again, leave, leave the help projects out of the discussion, and I'll agree with you that there are things that, uh, that are being proposed here that are not necessarily, uh, what, uh, what the community has suggested, but part of this issue, and, and, and you distressed this, of spending money on these things is that it takes the time clock off of us. And so if, for example, uh, in that, in that group up above, there's a million dollars that, that Kathy Williams asked to be on the list of the one-stop center hub, whatever, whatever it's being called today, uh, that has absolutely no, uh, no specifics attached to it. She's talked about a building, you know, she's talked about renovation, she's talked about programming, uh, but it's going to take time to put together the information that's necessary to finally commit dollars to, to a specific project. And we're, we're now into February, so we've got eleven months to make sure we've committed appropriately all those funds, or they go back to Washington. And I absolutely do not want that to happen, so. I would like for us to take a week to review this, to get our thoughts in order, and come back next week and, and talk about what are the things that we can agree, whether it's on council's list, or whether it's, it's something that's not even on this list, that the three of us can agree we want to make as a counter-proposal back to council. Because that's the need to give and take, um, to finally arrive at how are we going to invest the total twelve point seven eight million dollars of ARPA?
I just want to go back to ARPA's original intent, had the four pillars.
Correct.
And I think we need to keep the four pillars in mind as we look to this ever-dwindling fund that is going for county infrastructure, and a hundred percent of what council wants to spend these ARPA dollars on are regular county expenditures. They really do not want to spend one ARPA dime on community projects for what is remaining. They, not one community project got the nod, got approval, got any interest from council this morning, which is why as we ponder over the next week what commissioners want to come back with, I urge my colleagues to consider the intent of ARPA. These are tax dollars that were intended to allow this country to recover from the worst epidemic of our history, and to have, uh, those four pillars that we all can recite addressed in our community that would make a difference in our community. And I really don't think, uh, sump pumps and ejector pumps and generators are going to have that intended effect that ARPA was created to do.
Once again, I would say that in my opinion, you're, you're missing the point of the conversation this morning, that if we do these things, it will be to get the ticking time clock out of the equation, and that the dollars that are preserved in the general fund or another fund, if some of these are, are paid out of Q Core or Q Cap or what have you, uh, and those dollars then would be available for the commissioners and the council to establish how they're going to be spent, and we don't have to worry about completing them by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. So that's, that's the intention there. I fully expect that there are projects in that, that middle section.
Yes, there are.
That, that can and should be funded. What they are, we, we need to work through.
And they may go past December of two thousand twenty-four.
But that will give us the flexibility, if it does take a little longer to reach agreement, that we'll be able to keep those dollars and, and use them in Wayne County rather than giving them back to the federal government, uh, to be used somewhere else.
But I would remind you as to why we have to take the time bomb. For over two years, I've been urging us to deal with ARPA, ARPA, to discuss ARPA, to develop strategies for the usage of the ARPA that was outside the help restrictions. Help was so delayed, we were in the third tier. Uh, we could have addressed the use of ARPA dollars without waiting for ARPA's cumbersome delays, but we dithered this time away. Now it's time to stop the dithering and address these projects that can be of great benefit to our community and not just buy a bunch of sump pumps.
We have made, we have made good progress. We need to make better progress, and we will do that, so.
We dithered, so let's not punish the community for all that dithering.
We're not punishing the community. We are doing everything possible to make sure we're investing these dollars in the best way possible. Uh, so we'll, we'll revisit this next, uh, next Wednesday. Anything further for today?
I will not be here next week.
Will I be here next week? All right, I'm sorry.
Me, too.
You missed a meeting. You missed a lot.
That's Valentine's Day.
Well, that's probably why. All right. Anything else? If not, we're adjourned.